We're on. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Newmarket Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, February 12, 2013. Meeting shall start at 7:00. I will certify quorum here is present. Janice Rosa has an excused absent and Adam Schroeder is absent. All other members are present. If everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is if there are any public comments relative to non-agenda items. Seeing none, I'll close the public comments section. Review and approval of meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the planning board minutes of January 8, 2013 with adjustments, if any.
Second.
Okay. Rick, do you have any amendments?
I got none.
Anyone else? Okay. I have page four, line one.
Yes.
Delete the word "if."
Decide if they start.
It started here and this is the best area suited.
So the second if.
Thank you. Second if, yes. On page five, line 16.
She has a little acute copy with all the line numbers. I'm so quick at those line numbers.
Did you not get those? Those were sent, those were distributed.
But those are typically, I'm looking at mine.
Yeah, no, these were the distributed copies.
I just picked the ones up in my cubby hole.
Yeah, the ones in the cubby hole don't have the lines.
Okay.
The email copies do.
All right. Let's make sure Sue does that.
Well, it doesn't.
Okay.
I was just surprised at the alacrity with which you found these.
So on page five, line 16, at the end of the sentence, that should read, "You should come to..." End of that sentence.
Page five.
Yeah, line 16. If you have a comment, "You should come to a meeting."
You'll come to a meeting.
On line 25, that should read, she stated, instead of "they," just to clarify this, she stated when the zoning update committee first met, they were looking at all the areas. So it's just not confused that that was the Economic Development Committee. It was really our zoning update committee that stated that. And on line 27, "The Economic Development Committee not..." Does not need to focus. That is what the Economic, sorry, so it should be, "That is what the Economic Development Committee needs to focus on." That is correct. On Rick, on your motion, line 35, the motion would have been, "Rick McMenham made a motion to recommend to the town council the adoption of the proposed land use code and regulation, etc." Adoption of the proposed. Those would be my suggested amendments. Any discussion on those? All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. The meeting minutes of the 22nd have not been finalized. I'll take a motion to move those to the March 19, 2013 meeting.
So move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First order of business is Arcadia Engineers and Constructors LLC, the Russell Savargi Jr., which is a continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan at 13 Water Street, Tax Map U3, Lot 4 in the M2 Zone. This proposal is for the redevelopment of the property to include two projects. The first project is a restoration renovation of the historically significant FE Lang Blacksmith Building comprised of approximately 5,599 square feet. And number two, the construction of four new townhouse units totaling approximately 5,320 square feet. The board should actually be taking action on this tonight. We did not close the public comments from the last meeting on the 22nd. So, Tim, at this point, I'm still continuing public comments. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on this application? Seeing none, I am going to close the public comments. Okay. Does the applicant have any presentation of waiver requests?
Yes, there are two additional waivers that were submitted last week. One is for snow removal locations and the second is for a lighting plan, outdoor lighting plan.
And the reasons for the waivers?
There really are no snow storage areas on-site, so during any significant snow events, like the one we recently had, we will be loading and disposing of snow off-site. The lighting plan, we're requesting a waiver because we provided, we specified all dark sky compliant fixtures. We're also working with one of the abutters, Rivermore, to provide security lighting and to address some of their concerns. And the actual fixtures that we use, we're also complying with a request by the Conservation Commission to use a lamp that has a lighting frequency that's less intrusive to amphibians along the river. So we're working through some of those details.
I just wanted to add that the town engineer recommended it's not be snow removal on-site because of the close proximity to the river.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, let's do each waiver at a time, to grant the waiver to Section 305, the snow removal of our site plan regulation?
I make a motion to grant a waiver to Section 305 regulations regarding snow removal.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Do I have to open waivers to public comment? I think so. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion on the waiver of the lighting plan requirement of Section 316, sub-paragraph five of our site plan review regulations.
Make a motion that we grant a waiver for, to Section 3.16, paragraph five concerning the lighting plan.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And a motion on the hydroxyl section, we've already been requested this. Oh, I am so sorry. Before we move further on that, Adam is not here tonight. I should have appointed Jane as an official voting member, so if the record can indicate And so we'll take your vote from here on out. Thank you. I appreciate that. No, but keep me honest here. We've already heard in a prior presentation on the request for the hydroxyls, if we could move that forward as a motion to waive.
I'll make a motion that we waive the requirement for hydroxyls as per Section 410B, sub-paragraph two.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Waivers are granted. Is there any further, oh, I guess I'd like to get Diane's recommendations on the latest copy of our site plan? If anyone has any questions to Diane or the applicant, we can direct them at this point.
Just a couple of updates I wanted. You did get a copy of the report that I submitted to you on the 7th of February. A couple of updates to that. I did hear back from Rick Malaski and he has reviewed the plans for the fire lanes and the no parking signs that have been included within that area. And he has indicated his approval of the revised plans. We have received the waiver requests as we requested. Couple of other little things. Tim did make some further revisions to the plans after this memo was prepared and notes have been added to the plans pertaining to the zoning board of adjustment variances. And the detail on the handicap parking, the unnecessary space has been updated, so it's consistent with the regulations and with the plan that's been submitted. So with that, I would recommend that the board approve the site plan subject to the conditions and it would be conditions one through five, since six and seven have already been addressed.
Can I ask a question in terms of the protocol? I did see that was sent as an email. Are we expected to print out all the email documents or are we not going to get hard copies of all documents in our folder? What is the protocol? Because I'm a little bit confused because I, my mind...
Did you get a copy of it?
I got it. You emailed it to us, but I didn't print it out. And I don't know what the expectations are for something like that. It's nice to have a hard cop reference.
And you do have one now. You came in Monday morning before nine and it was printed when you, right after you left.
Okay, well, but I mean, I can't always come.
And as a matter of fact, I asked Sue.
Okay.
Hold on.
So is that protocol?
Do you have a hard copy now?
No.
Okay, they're here. And if anyone in the audience needs a hard copy, they're in front. Okay.
To answer your question, yes, we should be receiving in our inboxes any hard copies of any correspondence from the planning office.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies things.
Right. In, relative to, you know, facilitating information so that we can review it prior to actually having to see something, you know, on paper, we do communicate through email.
Right.
But we should be following, everything should be followed up with something hard copied in our box or it would be waiting for us at the meeting.
So typically...
But not having it in your box, I don't, doesn't relieve the board of our responsibility to just prepare for the meeting because so much will be.
Sure, no, I understand. Okay, well, I just, I just, I mean, I did read it, but I just assumed a hard copy.
No, no, just to clarify the policy or the procedure. And Jane, you might make a note of that relative to when we're updating our, with Janice, the policies, just make sure that that's really clarified.
Okay. Okay, does everybody have a printed copy? Because they're down here if anyone needs one. Okay. So Diane, your conditions are, prior to the planning board chair signing of the final plan set, the applicant shall provide a revised stamped and signed existing conditions plan as required by Section 4.1A and Section 4.1B2 confirming the property boundaries as shown in the site plan. Further, all sheets depicting boundary information shall be stamped by the LLS confirming correct boundary in lot areas. The second condition would be the impact fees for the project calculated in accordance with town regulations shall be paid to the Town of Newmarket. It is expected that multiple certificates of occupancy will be issued over the period of the build-out. Prior to the issuance of any CO, the prorated share of impact fee attributed to that portion of space for which the CO is requested shall be paid. The applicant, number three, the applicant shall enter into a developer's agreement with the Town of Newmarket, which includes findings of fact, special site plan approval conditions, the town's expectations prior to and during construction, requirements prior to the issuance of building permits, certificates of occupancy and scheduling. Number four, evidence that all relevant federal and state permits relating to wetlands and sewer line relocation have been secured. The copies of all permits and any corresponding conditions shall be provided to the town planning department prior to the signing of the site plans by the planning board chair. And the fifth condition would be the site plan shall be recorded at the Rockingham County Register of Deeds. The other two have already been addressed in the plans. Does the applicant have any questions or comments about the conditions?
No.
Okay. Does the planning board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Bott.
Yes, Mr. Bott.
Okay, actually two, actually, well, three. Conditions two and three, are they actually necessary? Isn't it?
Impact fees are only applicable if the planning board includes impact fees in the approval of a site plan. That's part of the impact fee ordinance.
Okay, so that, so two is required to collect?
To collect impact fees.
To collect impact fees.
Because we're assessing them at time of plan approval.
Okay, okay. And item three, is that required? Isn't that, he has, any developer would have final plans approved and then, once they're approved and recorded, they can pull building permits?
What?
Go ahead. You want to explain a developer's agreement?
What it does is basically brings the developer through the process from planning board approval to the issuance of the CO. It's an administrative matter and it includes things like having a pre-construction conference, making sure that everybody is working off the correct set of plans. It includes bonding and includes...
Okay. It just seems redundant to me. It seems like it's an extra set of papers that, that's fine.
It spells out the requirements for payment of construction management fees in advance of having any building permits issued, that sort of thing. So it's really, it's an administrative tool.
Okay.
And it's a very common tool that's used by professional planning offices.
And it's within our site plan regulations.
That they do this?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last one is item five where it says the site plan shall be recorded. What do we mean by that? All the pages or?
Just the C2 plan.
Okay. And I was just curious because I've seen some towns...
No, not C2.
Record them all and some just record the cover sheet.
Sorry. It's just the site plan, not all the, because they're not interested in all the technical details. And I know that the Rockingham County Register of Deeds is very particular about what's on the plan and how much detail there is. So we found that just the site plan, which gives an overview of what the planning board approved, is the document that should be recorded.
Okay, can I make a suggestion then? Is it typically when a planning, when a town wants to record a site plan, they always record the sheet that is signed by the planning board members? So everybody knows that the registry, that that is the sheet that was approved, so...
I have to assign all the sheets.
And there is a title block.
Yeah.
On that particular plan, there should be one.
But every...
See, the type, the first page has the signature of the planning board. You know, it has a box for it on the, on the cover sheet.
But our regulations require me to sign all of the plans that are stamped, well, to review and make sure all the necessary plans that are stamped by an engineer or surveyor and/or surveyor. And then I can sign off.
But shouldn't there be a, shouldn't there be a signature box on everyone?
There should be a signature box on each page.
Okay, all right. Okay, I was just confused about that.
We can send you either a detail or we have a stamp in the office that we can use.
Okay, thank you.
We can add that on the final.
So why don't you add that, Eric, on the signature box?
Yes.
So the sixth item, condition B, signature box shall be added to each page of the plan set. Any, any other suggestions, comments or questions? I'm pleased to note that you added infiltration area for, for collection of runoff and also your landscape notes. I'll just say, an interested Seacoast citizen called me to let me know that Southwest Airlines in previous month in their magazine, Spirit Magazine, told the story of a 30-year heroic effort to maintain an elm tree that had Dutch elm tree disease, so they can be treated. So if, if there is a finding that the tree does have some Dutch elm disease, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a no-go. And just want to let you know that I think we would all appreciate learning more details about the findings, so that doesn't necessarily mean that the tree has to go, even if it has a touch of Dutch elm disease. So I'm just relaying that after someone called me to tell me that story. I thought it was fascinating.
The tree that you're talking about is, it was actually named Herbie.
Herbie, okay. So you know this story.
Located in, I believe it was Scarborough, Maine.
Okay. Oh, good.
Yeah, there's an interesting story there. And just to update all, we did, we got a message from our arborist and the test, the visual test wasn't conclusive, so they're sending up the sample to UMass to do analytical test for the disease, so.
Okay, so you have Herbie in mind.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Or I could take a motion and then we could have a discussion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for, oh, there we go, for Arcadia Engineers and Constructors, for Tax Map U3, Lot 4 in the M2 Zone for the redevelopment including restoration and renovation of the historically significant FE Lang Blacksmith Building and construction of four new townhouse units. With the conditions one through eight now?
Well, one through six as read.
One through six, six and seven are no longer?
Correct. Those are already on the plan.
Oh, okay, okay. So one through six as, as read and discussed.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that this has been a very long and hazardous process for, for you and for many boards in town. I'd like to say that everyone's very excited that you're, you've chosen Newmarket to do this redevelopment, to move your business here. I think we're all very much looking forward to, you know, you enjoying much success down there and in turn the community as well. So, thank you for your patience and for your steadfastness. I'm not sure many developers would still be here tonight, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's a great site. I think it was really good.
It's a wonderful site and thanks to, I understand everybody here is a volunteer and I appreciate that. Your efforts are, you know, admirable and we really look forward to kicking off the project and we're very excited, so.
Good luck.
Best of luck to you.
Looking forward to a site walk sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our landscape regulations. So we do have printed copies now for the board to review.
Did you get a copy?
Wasn't it in your packet? Elizabeth, it's yours, from tonight.
So tonight?
Yeah.
Did you get an electronic copy?
Yes.
All right.
You did.
Okay. Okay. So, and thank you Diane for getting these to us and for getting, having Sue get everything printed for us. The, I'll just take any, I don't want to really get into any detail of this tonight. I think we want to probably have just some overview discussion. Eric, do you have a thought or comment? Yes.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? And I'll throw this out there obviously for everybody to consider. Some of these regulations would require trees or landscaping to be put on town property that the town would have to maintain eventually and care for. So I would suggest as one thing that we send this, or this gets sent to at least the DPW director and probably town manager and I don't know of any other...
Probably the tree warden?
Tree warden. I don't know if the Conservation Commission would really have any, any input, but I would suggest we, we send it to those people to, to review it from that perspective. I suspect that there's going to be some consternation about the planning board putting additional costs onto the town, burden, potential burden under the town, we'll put it that way. So I would suggest we start there and let the town go, people go, the town employees go through it and get their feedback before we spend a lot of time talking about it. I've gone through it, I have a bunch of other comments, but I think it's far too early to get into that level of detail.
I think that's a great idea. I was wondering also too if we should, you know, get this distributed to any, any of the professionals representing applicants that have come before us to get their input on how this may, you know, impact any, you know, future projects that come before us and see if they can take a quick review. Maybe Bill Doucet or Mike Seaver.
Yeah, if they're willing to, absolutely.
You can think of maybe some other, you know, particular folks you might...
I think the intention is good.
That have come before us would be good.
I think the intention is good, but the devil is always in the details.
Absolutely. Okay. So is everyone on board with that process? We can move this to the, is there anyone from the public that, are you here to speak about the landscape regulations, sir?
No, I'm just concerned reading this paper about people are concerned about the dam.
Oh, okay, let me, sorry, just not going to keep you. The public comments of non-agenda items was the first order of business, but that whole topic is not a planning board topic. That would be a town council issue. So if you have any comments about the dam, that, you would want to raise those to the town council.
Is that in, what paper is in it, sir?
The Xer.
Just this week?
Recently or in the past?
It was one that I read today.
Yeah. So the next town council meeting is a week from tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So if you had any, yeah, any questions or comments, you can direct them to the town council or to the town administrator. Steve Fornier would be the appropriate.
There's nothing he can offer today since he came all this way to...
It's not in our jurisdiction.
Concerned of rereading that for certain people.
No, absolutely. Any, any comments are valid comments. They're just not in the jurisdiction of our board. Okay.
Any others who can answer that.
Yeah, again, total reason to talk to the right people. Okay? All right. Thank you for taking your time to, to come out tonight. So the, so relative to the landscape regulations, I think that, Eric, that's a good, I think a good first way to proceed. So if we could have a motion to have this continued for board discussion at the March 19th meeting, we have a request for Diane to distribute this as recommended by the board and hopefully get input before that meeting.
I'll make a motion that, that we continue the discussion on this until the March 19th planning board meeting with the understanding that the town plan that Diane Hardy will distribute this to town sections for their comment.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. On the chairman's report, I would like authorization from the board to...
Just when we, the chairman's before, okay. So we'll have an opportunity to discuss other new old business.
Yes, yep.
All right.
So on the chairman's report, Diane and I are scheduled to appear before the town council again at their next meeting, which will be the first public reading of the, oh, sorry. They had the reading of the ordinance, it'll be the first public hearing of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance for the M2 zoning changes. So relative to the January meeting that we attended and presented at, everyone hopefully has received copies of those presentations. We did the update of the impact ordinance, I mean, the impact fee ordinance, I don't want to get into that. That's really old news that is off our plate. But everyone should have the presentation that Diane and I made. That was the PowerPoint presentation. So if anybody had comments or questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. Coming out of that meeting, the questions that were posed in the, in the initial discussions and debate that was going on in the council, I've prepared a memo to follow up with the council and to, to do an updated presentation. And there's four components that I'm going to submit. One is an updated bill analysis spreadsheet and looking at each individual parcel in more detail, there's really a total of 47 additional residential units that could potentially be constructed if, if those were actually built out. And I have, I've, and I'll make sure that you all have copies of this, but I really just finished it tonight. And I've gone through each of the 30... of the 36 parcels, we're really, we're talking about 36 parcels in the whole town to be rezoned, and of those three parcels are vacant and undeveloped, that's 8% of the district, nor of the district of the 36 parcels, there are 22 parcels right now that are non-conforming, they have residential and mixed uses now, that represents 16% of these total units, you know, clearly there's a disconnect with existing uses and the existing zoning, um, 11 of the parcels do have conforming uses, most of which because they've been redeveloped, and that's going to include, um, the, the medical office building, and then the parking lots for the mills, the Riverdale Automotive, even though it's not functioning anymore is that, the library and the railroad, those are conforming, um, there'll still be 19 units, or, you know, 19 parcels that are going to be, sorry, 19 units, residential units will still be grandfathered, um, so, that gets to one of the board members' questions earlier on about people who have more residential than is allowed, what happens then, it's grandfathered, if those units are ever redeveloped into mixed use, then they would have to get, they would have to go through that whole special use permit process, um, but before that, if they want to keep the number of units that they have, they'd have to get a variance from the ZBA, so, hopefully that will address some of the council's questions. Um, there's only one parcel that doesn't front on 108 that could be developed with all residential, that's the, um, the concept presentation that Mr. Decker and Bill Doucet had made for that Elm Street LLC, um, and we've heard from abutters that they want that to be residential, not commercial, so that, hopefully this change, well, obviously this change would promote that, and then there are three parcels that don't front on Route 108, but they're actually, um, used to support parking of other parcels' uses, like the mill parking or the Polish Club parking, so if that was to be redeveloped with any additional, with any residential, it would have to also address the parking needs of the mill and the Polish Club, so, and I think possibly, I'm not an engineer, but it's likely the only way to be able to do that would be a parking garage, um, so we really get down to 10 of the parcels could feasibly be redeveloped into mixed use with street level, commercial, retail, and then the residential above, again, 10 out of 36, and there would be six parcels which have sufficient, sufficient acreage to support additional units, eight, eight additional units on the six parcels without going through special use permit process, and the reason for that is because a single family or duplex under the proposed zoning doesn't have to go through the special use process, um, Councilor Wright talked about, did we look at unintended consequences of the zoning change, and I think that this was probably one that we did miss, so I would like a consensus from the board to recommend to the council a slight modification of the proposed special use permit section, um, right now in that section, special use permitting only applies to multifamily, which is three or more units, or mixed use with three or more units, and under that, there are two conditions of a special use permit that apply, and that is that there's two onsite parking requirements, uh, two onsite spaces per unit for parking, and that, um, there's the prohibition of residential on the first floor along the Exeter Streets and, and Exeter Road, Main Streets and Exeter Road, so by moving those two requirements out of the special use section into the main core of the M2 district, those two conditions would also apply, or regulations would also apply to a single family or, or a duplex, and I'll use as an example, there's a vacant lot next to Rite Aid, and if the zoning as proposed goes through, someone could theoretically pull a permit to build a single family house or a duplex, with this, with this, you know, recommended modification to pull out the, the, the mixed use component and the parking requirement, the only way anyone could develop residential on that lot, and there are five others similar to this, would be a mixed use, where they would have to have a commercial component in any residential would be above, so whether it's a single unit or in a couple instances, in two instances, someone could have two units, so that, I mean, you can keep going through these for, for years and, and never think of everything, but that was one thing that, you know, clearly was, would have been an unintended consequence, and so I would like to, um, you know, get a consensus from the, the board here to make that suggestion to the council.
Okay, can you point us to, is that in 1.09?
Yeah, it's 2.02.
And 1.1.
B, 2, 3, and 5. Of the M2, so it's 2.02, you'd have to go to that zoning.
I'm, I'm looking at your, yeah, your attachment here to the PowerPoint, 2.2.
Hey Belle?
Uh huh.
Can you ask a question?
Yeah.
This is on the agenda.
It's just under my chairman's report, I'm, I'm looking for authorization for me to make this recommendation.
Right, okay, I just, the implication, let me just.
It's not that we would be making it.
Right, but the implications are that if there are any modifications, then there would have to be another posting of the ordinance, and there would have to be another public hearing before any action could be taken on it.
By the council.
By the town council, that's right, I just want people to be aware of that, and technically it should be on the planning board agenda if it's going to be suggested as a recommendation for change.
I have no problem.
I mean, that's, I'm just saying.
Making the recommendation, because we're not.
I would feel more comfortable if it was on the agenda.
Yeah, I understand that, but we're not changing anything, it still has to go through, it still has to go through due process.
Yeah, but you're changing your recommendation.
We're suggesting a change, right.
I just want to make, fully understand what I.
Oh, I, I understand that.
I'm more than happy to do it as a private citizen.
Right.
If that would be better.
I just don't think it's, at this point, the planning board has made its recommendation, it's in the hands of the council, to now go back and change that recommendation, we need to go back through a process to do that.
So maybe you're suggesting why not let town council underline that and get back to us?
Right.
We not want anything coming back to us, we want the council to move forward.
Well, I disagree with the protocol.
So, if, um, if that is a technical issue, then I, I will make that suggestion as a, as just a private resident, um, because that would have been an unintended consequence, and when the, when the council posed that question, you know, it made me step back and say, let's really take another look.
Now that we're discussing it, can you point me, I would like to look at it, so I just make sure I understand.
202.
Yep, I'm, yep.
B.
202B.
2.
Special use.
3.
The project shall have at least, okay, can I just read it, I'm just trying to understand this.
But I think what Diane is saying, we probably shouldn't be discussing this because it won't be a planning board action, okay, so if anyone has, I guess I would say if anyone objects to that to, as a private individual, please attend the council meeting, and, so I won't present that as a, as a, as a planning board chair.
I, I would, I would like to discuss the letter that this, um, woman, Muriel Haley Knight, took the time to write.
Well, let's get that under new business.
Context of the zoning.
Well, I think. But I think what Diane is saying, it's not on the agenda, so.
Not on the agenda, you can't.
Oh, well, it didn't, oh, but we were given this letter, so I just feel that we should at least take the time to consider it as a group since she took the time to write it to us, and that's what I would like to proffer under new old business, isn't this the right section to be discussing this, new old business?
Well, I mean theoretically, you bring it up to new business, but I think the point that, let me finish, okay, because this is my chairman's report, and we'll go into new old business.
Okay.
But Diane, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention, okay, because you're right, it would be a technical issue that, for, for us to, to, again, I wasn't looking for a motion, but even to make a consensus would be, could be interpreted as similar to having a direction to change the ordinance and move forward.
Because in the town's, in the town's ordinance on adopting zoning changes, the planning board has to make a recommendation before it goes to the council.
Okay.
So if we're now modifying that recommendation, then there's a formal process that should be gone through.
No, I appreciate you definitely jumping in on that, okay.
Not that I don't agree with what you're saying, I'm just.
No, no, and that's why you're here.
I just don't want us to get in trouble down the road, that's all.
No, I hear you, so the other three items that I'll be including in response to some of the discussion in question would be an assessed valuation spreadsheet, which I developed with the town tax assessor, and then two analysis, one on Kent Place redevelopment and one on Water Street redevelopment, um, and those just basically show what the tax, um, the, the tax impact is on redevelopment of those two projects, um, so that would be the follow-up to the presentation that we did on the 16th, and then again, I would really encourage any planning board members to please come to that meeting, um, which is on the 20th, I don't know where we'll be on the agenda, but I'm sure there's going to be a lot of lively discussion on the council.
There's going to be two items that evening, and this one is, I believe, first on the agenda.
Excellent, so we would appreciate any support, any comments to make as a planning board member or as a private citizen at that hearing.
When are you sending that to the council?
It will go to Steve Fornier tomorrow.
And he'll distribute, okay, so we'll have enough time to look it over?
The council, yes, we're, I think we've been able to get any of our information to the council, so it's in your packets, a week before or whatever, whenever to do, I guess they do a couple days before Friday or.
Yeah, usually Friday.
Hopefully we've been able to do that.
Okay, good.
Okay, and I do apologize because my, our materials were in your packet, but our presentation wasn't, so Steve is going to put the presentation in your packet, but I did send that to him the day after the council meeting, hoping he would distribute it, which he says he did. Um, the other thing on the chairman's report is we have an open seat, um, for a one-year term, um, that, so we have, Eric, you're running for the three-year term?
Yep. Janice.
Janice is running, okay, so there's the unfulfilled term, I believe, oh, did it be Justin, Diane?
Yes, because I was filling Justin's term.
Okay, right, so that's a one-year term, and whoever gets the most write-ins will actually be the, the planning board member to fill that one-year term, so rally the causes of who we might want to, you know, get behind privately, as far as, when I say privately, we can't do this as a planning board, but, um, there will be, um, the opening for that, and then we'll have, um, we still have two alternate openings to be filled, okay, so let's hopefully take those up at our March meeting, so to be thinking about that, and, um, trying to get some people to, you know, approach us about becoming an alternate, um, committee reports, um, it, town council, other than what we just reported on.
Yeah, right, uh, I think that's the big one, uh, the town council, we met, had a business meeting on February 6th, had a slew of, uh, readings, second readings, and we also had something to do with the water department was looking for a new, new utility truck, that, we just asked them, sort of buying new, if they could just look around and perhaps come up with a second-hand, um, truck with lesser miles on it, like 10, 15,000, and if not, we'd discuss it further, you know, there's, there's a need for one, it's just that we're trying to be a little sharper with our pencil, and, uh, then we had a little discussion also right at the end of the meeting, a couple of counselors on the Economic Development Committee, and, uh, and I attended that last night and saw what, what happened with you and the, the rest of your committee, which is very impressive, so, that's it.
Okay, Jane, your committee hasn't really started yet.
No, we haven't started yet, I've been trying to pull some of the policy stuff together.
Okay.
Diane, I'll reach out to you, get some more info on that, so if we have a foundation for when Joyce comes back.
Excellent, um, Elizabeth?
Um, I just, in terms of committees, nothing, nothing's happened, nothing, no.
No projects coming in.
Nope.
Okay, Janice is gone, Rick, you're no more CIP, right?
Eric, please.
No, well, TRC, but, yeah, there's no other, TRC hasn't met with any other applicants, okay.
No.
All right, uh, planner's report, Diane.
We are still looking for a representative to the Straff Regional Planning Commission to fill the term that was vacated by Roseanne Clocks, so if there's anyone out there who's interested in becoming involved, please do submit an application, and it will be considered by the board at a future meeting, um, second item, there's also going to be a presentation, do you have a question, Mr. Bodiman?
Yes, I just, could you say for people out there how often they meet, when they typically meet, so people would know what, if anybody applies, once a month typically, isn't it?
Actually, I would defer to Mr. McMinimum since he was the representative from the town a couple of years ago.
Usually they met once a month.
Once a month, right.
Third Friday of the month, it's in the morning, 10 to 12, and then every quarter they would meet in a different town and have a guest speaker, uh, come up and, and speak to the group, and then they'd have a meeting afterwards to vote on, um, like the budget and certain bills or recommendations they wanted to make.
Thank you, I just want that up there, so if anybody wanted to apply, they know what it would take.
Thank you. Um, the second item, at the workshop meeting of the town council next week, there's going to be a presentation by Dubois King on the pedestrian bridge project, there's been some redesign, if you will, of the project to reduce some of the cost, and we're down to, still over our initial budget, but we're looking for additional funding from different sources, but that's something I know that, um, people in the planning board have an interest in, so that will be the second item on the agenda, uh, workshop agenda next week, and that's all I have, Madonna.
Okay, thank you, now any other old new business?
I just would like to bring up the letter that Ms. Knight, Muriel Knight, she obviously had to put a lot of her heart and soul in trying to contribute to the future of Newmarket through her understanding of the past, and I think, um, one of the excellent points I think she made in this letter was that, um, we have to be very careful about activity near the railroad and in terms of encouraging, um, any more activity near that, and I, and she expressed childhood, um, stories and histories concerning her proximity to the railroad and families nearby to the railroad, and I think she's concerned about someone getting hurt there in the context of any of our zoning, um, regulations, and I think we should bear that in mind when we look at some of the parcels close to the area she's writing about, where she lived.
So I would recommend just keeping this on file relative to any, um, applications that come before us in those areas.
And it was, it was very courteous and considerate of her to, to warn everyone of potential conflicts there, thank her publicly.
Yeah, she spent a lot of time doing it.
She really did, thank you, she is a wonderful woman. Um, I also want to acknowledge and thank Elizabeth for the, the, the excerpt out of Rockland, that was very informative and enlightening, and, um, we requested that, this also went to Steve, right, got forwarded to Steve?
And timely.
Yeah, very timely.
Well, I was hoping to give you some.
Yeah, it was.
So that was great.
It was forwarded to Steve.
Okay, um, if not, it would be really helpful, maybe, um, that, you had a copy right in, that was pretty nice numbers.
Yeah.
On per acreage tax revenues.
Yes.
Could buy some new trucks with those numbers.
There you go. Beautiful.
Uh, yeah, that was timely, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other old new business? Hearing none?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for everyone's input and, uh, participation in that Cadya Engineers process and review, that was, uh, it was really nice to have a, um, an application that I'll sign. That was, it was really nice to have a, an application that I'll sign as a chair that doesn't have a lot of conditions of plan changes to be made before they get signed.
Just, you know, from my standpoint, I think Diane put a huge amount of effort in trying to make all this work, so I appreciate that because you've spent a lot of time working with applicants.
Yeah. So, I'll take that part out.